It's 6:45, Tuesday, March 7th, 2023. I'd like to call the meeting to order for this annual meeting of the CIC members. First item on the agenda is the election of new members to the Board of Directors.
I'd like to make a motion to add Jonathan Dieters to replace Mr. Porter on the CIC Board.
I will second that.
Any discussion? Mr. Kellums, would you call the roll?
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Ms. Schwagman.
Aye.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Dieters. Welcome to the Board. Next item on the agenda is the election of officers. I would like to nominate Mr. Tom Weedman to serve as Chairman of the CIC Board of Directors.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Mr. Kellums.
Mr. Dieters.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Ms. Schwagman.
Aye.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Mr. Kellums, aye.
Okay. All right. Next, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Tracy Schwagman as Vice Chair. I guess we're going Vice President under this. These terms correct?
Correct.
Vice President? I will second that.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Mr. Kellums.
Mr. Dieters.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Ms. Schwagman.
Aye.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Mr. Kellums, aye.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Mr. James as Secretary of the CIC Board of Directors.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kellums.
Mr. Dieters.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Ms. Schwagman.
Aye.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Mr. Kellums, aye.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Mr. Dieters as Treasurer of the CIC Board of Directors.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Mr. Kellums.
Mr. Dieters.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Ms. Schwagman.
Aye.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Mr. Kellums, aye.
And I'd like to make a motion to nominate Mr. Kellums as our Executive Director of the CIC Board of Directors.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Mr. Kellums.
Mr. Dieters.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Ms. Schwagman.
Aye.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Mr. Kellums, aye.
Okay. Our Board is back in place. Next item on the agenda is approval of December 6, 2022, CIC meeting minutes. Do we have a motion?
I don't know if we approve those minutes.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Mr. Kellums.
Mr. Dieters.
Aye.
Mr. Dieters wasn't there and then finished a little.
Yes.
Mr. Dieters.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Ms. Schwagman.
Aye.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Mr. Kellums, aye.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is Economic Development Grant Program. So if you can see on our sheet, it looks like we have total liabilities and fund 97, 291. Our total expenses were $31,613.08. So we have a fund balance of $28,904.56. Is that correct?
Actually, there's a slight change in that. The total expense is $32,202.54.
Is it?
So last year, 2022, our final numbers were $85,579.64, $82,480.14. So that was grants. So we started off the year with a balance of $28,904.56.
Gotcha. Okay.
Added 100 grand to that. So this year so far, including expenses, it's been $32,202.54. So our balance right now is $96,702.2.
Okay. So that 32,202 includes the checks we just signed today?
It does not.
It does not?
It does not include today's.
Okay. Okay. How did that compare to last year? Do you know? On grants?
On grants, 2022, the total year was lower than 2021. The grants were $91,463. But I do not know how that compares with just January and February.
Okay.
But for the year 2022 was lower.
Okay. All right. Anybody have any other questions? Okay. Make a note that the date of our next meeting is June 6th at 6:45 PM. And if there is no other business, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
If we adjourn.
I second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Seven o'clock PM, I'd like to call a regular trustee meeting of March 7th, 2023 to order. If anyone could please rise for the invocation to this being given this evening by?
Myself.
Mr. Cullums.
Heavenly Father, we come together this evening to seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. Be with us, Lord, in our deliberations and help us to be wise in the decisions that we make here tonight. Give us insight to lead with integrity, Father. Grant us the humility to always seek your will in all that we do and say. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
If you please, if you're standing, pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the Father, on the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Deeters can note that all three trustees are present. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the February 21st, 2023 trustee meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from February 21, 2023 trustee meeting.
And I'd like to second that motion.
Any further discussion? Mr. Deeters, would you call the roll?
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Schwagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Public comments. Do we have any public comments this evening?
Jeff.
Mr. Utter, anybody sign in for the public comment portion of our meeting?
There are two comments, but they were for the earlier portion.
Okay.
Are you good? Okay. Thank you. Planning and zoning report.
I do not have anything to add to tonight's meeting except for the resolution that we'll consider.
Okay, so that takes us to the next item on the agenda, which is the zoning case 2023-01MA, which we heard in the public hearing earlier this evening. Do we have any further discussion or we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve case 2023-01MA with the conditions set forth by the staff as well as what I'd like to do is replace condition number five with a condition that reads "All rear lighting and exterior and garage lighting will be on a motion sensor. However, one egress light will remain operational 24/7 in the parking garage." That would be replacement of number five from the staff report. I will be adding, I'd like to add, "Existing asphalt apron along Montgomery Road must be removed." And the last one would be "Proposed project shall meet Section 302.2 of the Property Maintenance Code."
So do we have a, I guess I'm, next I'm going to be looking for a motion to, if you can scroll back there. There we go. Looking for a motion regarding a resolution approving a major adjustment for 8810 Montgomery Road for Dr. Michael Hall DDS in Sycamore Township and dispensing with a second reading as written with the given provisions as proposed by Mr. Weedman.
Motion.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Is that sufficient?
Yes. That's a little convoluted, but, very good. Any further discussion?
I'll just note we had a public hearing earlier. It seems like this is a nice project and it'll be a welcome addition to the neighborhood there and seems to be amenable to the neighbors. So it'll fit nicely with the other structures that are going in on the site there and we welcome you to that location once you get it done.
Mr. Weedman, any other comments?
Can I ask for clarification? Do you want all exterior lights motion sensor?
All rear exterior lights. I think, I think it actually was worded to the east.
It's a...
East, okay.
All rear, eastern elevation.
Eastern elevation.
So the north lights you want to stay on, and the pole light you want to stay on?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And it would include the garage lighting shall be on a motion sensor too.
Sure.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I guess only to note this wouldn't prohibit lights in the front from being turned off unless code requires them to be on though, right?
Yeah, they can stay on.
They can stay on, yeah, yeah, they can stay on. The code looks at the foot candles and the foot candles are compliant, you know, with the...
No, my question was they can be turned off too, of course, right? The way that question was phrased and answered, it was as if it had to stay on all the time out front. We're not requiring that, correct?
The lights could, certainly could stay on.
Or they could be turned off.
Or they could be turned off.
Right, that was my question.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
We're talking about the, on the...
Port side?
No, on the Montgomery roadside.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
We good?
Mm-hmm.
No further discussion. Okay. Mr. Deeters, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Schwagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Very good. Motion passes, or resolution passes.
Welcome.
Welcome. Welcome to Sycamore Township. Next item on the agenda, Sheriff's Patrol report.
I spoke to Lieutenant Tarler today. We have nothing to report.
Okay. All is well and right in Sycamore Township. EMS and fire report.
Just report, we have three part-time firefighters that have started here very soon and I got two more in the near future as soon as they graduate from school. So we're doing good on that. I do have, if anybody is in need of any COVID test, home test, I have some in at the firehouse if anybody needs any. We got some from the health department. And then the last thing is the fire truck that's been out for repair for God only knows how long is going to be done, it's done now, so we can, we're going to be picking it up in the next couple of days.
Exciting.
So that's good. That's all I have.
We have a question.
You have a question?
Chief?
Yeah.
So you said three part-time and two when they graduate. Does that include the part-timer that left from Deer Park?
No, so we're down one with them.
Okay.
Yeah. These are, these are just new guys that are out of school.
Okay, perfect. Okay.
Chief, also, would you like to talk about the turnout gear a little bit? We're going to, we have a PO tonight.
Yes, we have, we have a nucleus, a turnout gear that's well over a 10-year mark and we, we had it inspected last year and they're not. They failed the test or they need so much repair it's cheaper to buy a new set. So the turnout gear that Mr. Cullums has tonight is to replace that, those units.
Very good. All right. Roads, Maintenance and Recreation. Mr. Rubel Schoufer.
I give you some money.
Good evening. Got a full report tonight. Let's start with Parks and Rec report. Just like to make an announcement that most of our athletic field rental spots have been filled. As usual, we've been experiencing a high demand for our fields this season. Shelter rentals have been picking up. If you're planning on having an event, I would suggest reserving sooner rather than later. Roads report, Montgomery Road sidewalk project, Stewart Road to Ken Arbor are those limits. Construction is to begin April 17th. All the abutting property owners will be notified prior to construction. The Gideon Lane Culvert improvement, we will have a bid opening March 10th, 10:00 AM here at the township building. Get that project underway hopefully very soon. The Euclid Road sidewalk project, Hosbrook to Michael. There is a SORTA grant signing ceremony tomorrow. I will be attending that. Provide them the contract, signed contract that Mr. Cullums will sign. The estimated cost of the project is $996,030. The grant is 70% SORTA funds, which will equal about $697,000 that SORTA will pick up. Townships will be responsible for 30% of the funds, which would be $298,809. We will be posting on the township website tomorrow after the signing ceremony for RFQs for engineering. Get that project...
Okay.
That's great.
Go on. East Kemper Road sidewalk project, Bain to Schneider Road, is currently in the early design phases. Projected construction date is 2026 on that. And then the last sidewalk project that I would like to report on would be the Bain Road, Deerfield Road sidewalk project, which is East Kemper Road to Shuler Park. We have finished a preliminary engineering and I'm anticipating that we will be moving into design phase soon. That is all I have for reports. Have a couple resolutions. If you have any questions on the report, I'd be happy to answer them.
Steve, who did we, who did we fill in on the ball, the ball diamond up in, at Shuler? Who filled in the spaces that were, were being used by Moeller?
The, there's a couple teenage teams being filled in and also I believe Moeller's JV is going to be using some of those dates as well.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Was it, was that, that teen one, was that the Bill Kane from All Saints?
I am not sure.
Okay.
I can check on it though and find out who, who we are filling that spot.
Okay.
Yep.
Steve, I've got a question too. I got some questions from some neighbors in Sturbridge about Bob Meyer Park and the playground and what our plans are for it there. I know we've been through some repair attempts we made on some things that were broken and somewhat obsolete.
Yeah.
I think we had some discussion of new equipment being planned at some point there. Can you give us an update on that?
Yeah, the, as you're aware, the, you know, some of the playground equipment, it was closed for a few months while we were trying to find some replacement parts. Those finally came in. The repairs were made. We're going to be trying to pursue some grant money and hopefully put some new equipment in up there. So it's kind of been in the discussion, design phase, so to say. So hopefully in the future we can get something going.
Very good.
Yep. No other questions. Let's, I'd like to move to the resolutions. The first resolution I have for the trustees to consider is a resolution authorizing a contract for purchase of equipment for one 2023 Intimidator 18XP, 18-inch drum style, brush bandit, and dispensing with a second reading.
Motion.
And I'll second the motion to approve the resolution.
You want to give us a little background on this, Steve?
Sure.
Jeff, could you, there should be something in the packet if you could scroll.
There we go.
Keep going. Yeah, we should have a maintenance log.
Keep going. There you go.
There you go.
You can all read that, right?
With some binoculars.
Can I borrow your glasses?
Yeah.
So we purchased this brush chipper in 2008 and we, if you notice the last, I believe it was three, three years, we've started putting a considerable amount of money in it. Just in the past two years, almost $4,000 in maintenance. And the one thing I would like to add is, out of all of our equipment, our brush chipping machine gets the most use. And I think I did mention this is a 2004 model, so with extremely high miles. So I think, you know, just this past week, I'll give you a good example. I think we responded to 30 storm damage pickups just in the past three days, so.
This is probably the most appreciated piece of equipment in the entire township.
Yeah. It probably is, so it does get...
Everyone cheers when it comes down their street.
Or the plow.
There's no plow.
Yeah, so.
Are we looking at immediate delivery on this upon approval or is this the sort of equipment we have to wait three years for it to?
Yeah, so that's a good question. I did ask the sales rep and they do have, I think he said 13 or 14 2023 models in stock. He suggested if we got it in by the end of March, we could secure a 23 model. If we waited any longer, the, would probably have to be a 24 model here. Yep, so.
Any further discussion?
No.
All right, Mr. Deeters, if you'd call the roll.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Schwagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Okay. The next resolution for the board to consider, a resolution approving a contract for the 2023 Cape Seal Road Repair Project and dispensing with the second reading.
Motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? I think this is the work we talked about, was it last meeting maybe?
Yes.
This was going to be coming?
Yep, so this, this is the project that Mr. Trustee Weedman referred to, which would cover about 20, 25% of the township. Well, streets will be affected by this project. And I believe I had it broke out because you had a good question, how many were in the northern part of the township and southern part of the township. And if you look at the square yardage, 62,550 square yards up on the, in the south side and the north side, I think it was about, yeah, 68,400. So pretty split.
That's great. Any further discussion? Mr. Deeters.
Mr. James.
Aye. Did we actually have a motion? Yeah, actually.
I thought we did.
We did.
Did we not? Huh?
I think, I made a motion.
I think you made a motion and made a second.
Sorry.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Schwagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Law Director report.
Nothing to report from the law director.
Okay. Administrator report. Mr. Cullums?
So first, I'd like to talk about Heightmeyer Electric. You know, we've been in touch with Chad Schaefer still back and forth. It was nice that, you know, we had a, quite a large storm last Friday. There was thousands of outages all across the county. And I know Heightmeyer did not go out. There was reports that it flickered and that is exactly what those switches that they put in were supposed to do. So they are doing the work. So, so far it's, it's been a good job by Duke and we'll continue to pursue that. Other than that, Kenwood Traffic Study has been completed. It is on our website. We will have a public meeting on that Tuesday, March 21st at 6:00, right here at the administration building. Letters to the businesses and residents that are on Kenwood Road throughout the whole project went out yesterday. So they should all be receiving those. That's also on our calendar and on our website that we'll be having a public hearing. So that will be interesting to see what comes of that.
Tracy, I had reached out to you at the end of last week also about getting a better copy of the report from TEC. Did you hear anything back from them yet? Some of the diagrams that they were...
I do hear about that. I thought it had already been fixed. Have you checked again? I'll check tomorrow. I thought they had already done it.
No, if they replaced the PDF, I'll check their site then. Okay. Thanks.
The only other thing I have is a couple purchase orders over $5,000. So the first was the one the chief talked about, PO number 23-94 from Phoenix Safety Outfitters, the amount of $49,863.40 and this is for the fire department turnout gear. And 23-95 for Bushelman Supply for $29,612.33. This is for garage doors being installed on the North Salt Dome. Those are the only two POs that we have this evening.
I move we approve the purchase order list.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Deeters.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Schwagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Mr. Deeters, fiscal officer report.
Yes, we had cash receipts of $4,241,592.32. And we had disbursements of $382,533.40.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Deeters.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Schwagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Trustee comments?
I have a couple. First, I want to thank Stevie and the crew for, I know we had a lot of storm damages last week and you guys did a great job of cleaning. I got a number of calls saying what a great job you guys were doing. So good job on that. I did get a notice from somebody in Heightmeyer on Sunday that after the storm that they had a tree that was leaning towards the, towards the wires in the backyard. And I contacted Duke on Sunday and Monday they assessed it and I think, hopefully today, they took that tree down. So quick response by Duke to the Heightmeyer situation. We're fortunate that, as Tracy had suggested, that Heightmeyer did not lose power during this, during the storm this past week. So I think improvements are coming in Heightmeyer and we're happy that Duke is responding the way they are. So that's all I have.
I'll join in on that. There were Duke crews out in the neighborhood Saturday morning at about 7:30 AM in the yard next to mine looking at damage. It was great. The power just flickered, didn't go out, so things are making great progress there. I'll also add that this month is the 220th anniversary of the state of Ohio and if the history accounts I read are correct, the 220th anniversary of Sycamore Township as well. Sycamore Township was created in the first act of the Ohio Legislature after statehood in a meeting in, I think, March 24th in Chillicothe, when Hamilton County was chopped up basically because it used to encompass much of the southwestern part of the state. And Sycamore Township was apparently created in that act too. So happy 220th birthday, everyone. That's all I have.
Should have brought, we should have had a birthday.
That's right.
I'll just comment that everyone should be watching their mailboxes. The hard copy of the quarterly newsletter should be hitting mailboxes soon. Thanks to everybody up here that contributed content and articles to that newsletter and thanks to the staff for all the work that they do to put that out. I think everybody will enjoy the mix of newsworthy items that are in this, this quarter's newsletter. Other than that, we have a special zoning commission meeting for general purposes scheduled for Wednesday, March 8th, 2023 at 6:00 PM in the administration building here at 854, 854 to Kenwood Road. As mentioned earlier, there is a bid opening later this week, Friday, March 10th, 2023, for the Gideon Lane Culvert Improvements. It's at 10:00 AM here at the administration building. On March 21st, we have several meetings scheduled, one of which is the Tax and Center Review Council meeting at 5:00 PM here at the administration building. A public hearing for a zoning case 2023-02Z also slated for the 21st here at 5:30. And then a public meeting here at the Township Administration Building at 6:00 PM for the Kenwood Traffic Study that was mentioned earlier as well. For all other scheduled meetings and events, please see the published calendar.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned at 7:24.